San Mateo City Council, welcome everybody. This is the regular meeting. I'm now calling this meeting to order. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and please be seated. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gouthos.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read the health orders that were put in place and are in place currently. We're holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling via telephone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So tonight, we have our first item is ceremonial, and we're going to be we're going to have the Society of Science, Regeneron Science Talent Search San Mateo finalists. And I'm going to hand it off to Mark Hurwitz. Mark Hurwitz, with physics at Nueva School. Mark, are you there?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Bonilla. Uh, yeah, my name is Mark Hurwitz. I teach physics at the Nueva Upper School at the San Mateo campus, which of course is located at Bay Meadows. I'm in my ninth year of teaching. And, uh, thank you for recognizing, um, our schools, well, more specifically, our students' achievements in the Regeneron National Science Talent Search. Uh, when I was a kid, this was run by Westinghouse. Uh, but this is the nation's top, um, talent competition uh, for high school students. The Nueva School had three kids finish in the top 300 nationally. Um, uh, one of them is Karen Guo, and we had two, two of those three finished in the top 40 nationally. Those include Andrew Chu and Yash Narayan, who, um, is able to be with us tonight. Um, and Yash, uh, would you like to turn, uh, unmute yourself and briefly describe your project and what it was like to travel to Washington DC and rub elbows with your contemporaries?
Uh, thanks, Mark, and, uh, thanks, Mayor Bonilla, for inviting me. Um, yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to describe a bit about my project. So in my work, I developed an AI-based mobile application called Deep Waste for accurate waste classification. A common problem is when people are at a waste bin and they have a waste item in their hand, they don't know which bin to throw that item into. So I wanted to devise an easy-to-use way for people to accurately throw their waste. Um, so a user with the app can just point their phone camera to a waste item and take an image of it, and the app will tell them whether that item should go in the recycling, compost, or trash bin. And what I found was that in real-world comparisons, the app performed nearly 50% more accurate on average than a human at sorting waste. Uh, in terms of the finalist experience, it was absolutely amazing and, quite honestly, one of the best weeks of my life. Um, we got to meet a variety of, uh, people ranging from the scientific advisor to President Biden to a host on SNL. Um, but really, the, the main prize was talking and getting to really know the other finalists. Um, that was really bigger than any monetary prize that I could have asked for and having that network of people, um, there, of scientists that I can count on in the future.
Okay, thank you, Yash, and thank you again, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Hurwitz, could I, could I cut in for a second? Because I'm very impressed with Yash's project. In my position at the Rethink Waste Facility, which is known as South Bayside Waste Management Authority, where you think of sorting and getting proper sorting done properly. That's pretty connected, are you guys hearing that too?
You are losing Legos no matter what happens tonight. You're losing Legos. No?
Okay, thanks. Anyway, I want to really congratulate you.
Oh, you're not the boss, you're not in charge. You're muted.
Somebody is not muted.
I think it's Zach. I think you get Zach Doll to mute.
Okay. There we go. So, Yash, as I was saying, sorting is one of the biggest challenges, and actually making sure that things that are considered recyclable are actually recyclable is another challenge. And I'm sure you're aware of that. But your work is really well appreciated. I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you. And Mr. Hurwitz?
Yeah, tha- thank you again. And I'll just briefly mention the project of Andrew Chu, who wasn't able to be, be with us tonight. He constructed a model of California's entire electricity system, supply, demand, and how all of it varies through the year. And he can, he evaluated the impact of adding a long-term storage capability. California doesn't currently have much of this, but if there's extra electricity in the midsummer, maybe you'd like to use it to pump water uphill and tap into it in the winter. And what he showed was, depending on price point, having that capacity could reduce, for example, our needs for solar facilities by a factor of two. So it was also a very impressive project.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hurwitz, because I also serve on the Peninsula Clean Energy Project. And what you're talking about is exactly one of the things that we're looking at. We actually study by all sorts of different types of energy generation, because we need to be, um, um, not invested all in one type of technology. So we have to diversify our, our investments and our types of generation. So I really appreciate that you have these young people working on that, Mr. Hurwitz. Uh, please share with young Mr. Chu that we really appreciate his efforts. And thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Okay, thank you again. Have a good evening.
Okay. Okay, next, we have the College of San Mateo with its 100th anniversary. And I think we will have a presenter here. Uh, the president of CSM, Jennifer Taylor Mendoza. Are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Rick Bonilla, Deputy Mayor Diane Pappan, council members and community. My name is Dr. Jennifer Taylor Mendoza, and I'm the president of College of San Mateo. I'm joined tonight alongside our Director of Community Relations and Marketing, David McLean. And we want to first say we appreciate the opportunity to address all of you this evening, and we thank you so much for the proclamation acknowledging College of San Mateo's 100th years of academic service to the community. This is a very exciting time for us as we enter our centennial year. We'll be kicking off the occasion with a celebratory gala next week on Thursday, March 31st, at the Cole Mansion in Burlingame. The date is notable, as it was the same date residents of San Mateo and Burlingame voted to establish the college 100 years ago. I invite all of you to join us at the gala. The event is open to the public, and tickets are still available through our centennial website, which will be displayed shortly. Following the gala, we're really excited. Our centennial year will continue with on- and off-campus events through March 2023. This will include a student-led social justice conference in late April, an Asian-American Pacific Islander Film Festival in early May, and the return of Jazz on the Hill in late July. Also in fall, we will be holding our fifth Athletics Hall of Fame Ceremony, a Family Science Week in October, and CSM Historical Display at the San Mateo County History Museum. So a lot of activities, a lot of great things to see. Not only will these events be fun, they will be helping support our students. And we have partnered with the San Mateo County Community College Foundation on these events to raise funds throughout the years for our Promise Scholars Program. The Promise Scholar Program provides free tuition, priority enrollment, dedicated wraparound counseling support, and financial assistance for textbooks, food, and transportation. It is a program that's helping many of our media students reach their academic goals and get rewarding careers. By participating in this upcoming centennial events, you will have the opportunity to help support this program. I'll now turn it over to David McLean to share a few slides about CSM's history.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor Mendoza. As many of you know, CSM has been a critical part of our local educational and economic ecosystem for generations. I'm going to highlight just a few of the key moments in the college's history. CSM was established in 1922 as San Mateo Junior College, the first such academic institution on the entire SF Peninsula. The first four decades of the college's history saw many temporary locations, beginning in a surplus San Mateo High School building on Baldwin Avenue. The late, the college later moved to the original Cole Mansion, where Central Park now sits. An effort to build a new campus before World War II never came to fruition. After the war, classes met in former US Merchant Marine barracks at Coyote Point. By 1954, the college was doing far more than its original task of duplicating the first two years of a university experience for local high school graduates. Its average student age rose to 21, thanks in part to the GI Bill that funded education for World War II veterans. More students were enrolled in evening programs than in traditional day programs, and they tended to be older and more career-focused. Many followed paths such as aeronautical engineering or plumbing, rather than transferring to the kind of senior college that was assumed by the junior in San Mateo Junior College's name. Therefore, many at the college thought a new name was called for. They embraced two-year college's distinct role in serving community, serving communities' many local needs. In April 1954, college trustees voted to adopt College of San Mateo as the school's new name. Almost 10 years later, in 1963, CSM moved to its current location at College Heights, where the tradition of academic excellence continues today. While this brief history focuses on the physical institution, it's the people, faculty, students, staff, administrators, and community members that have made it an outstanding place to learn over the years. I invite you to learn more about them and our upcoming events on our centennial website, And I will end the PowerPoint, and now I'll turn it back over to Dr. Taylor Mendoza to close.
Wonderful, thank you so much, David. We are truly the community's college, and we are using our centennial year to learn from our past while preparing for our future. The next century will bring many new opportunities and challenges, but CSM stands ready to educate, train, and mentor our future leaders. Rooted in a foundation of academic excellence, student support, community solidarity, and a commitment to make the world a better place, CSM is here to serve. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, President Taylor Mendoza. What a great presentation, and I really appreciate that slideshow. Such, such really well-preserved history there. So as the mayor, I'm now going to read the proclamation, which you will be receiving on behalf of the City of San Mateo, the mayor and the city council. Starting, whereas, College of San Mateo was established in 1922 at San Mateo High School as the first community college in San Mateo County with 35 students, and has since grown into a three-college district that has served multiple generations of students. And, whereas, CSM has served as a gateway to higher education, transfer, workforce development, and self-enrichment rooted in a foundation of academic excellence, student support, community solidarity, and a desire to make the world a better place. And, whereas, CSM is a leading degree-granting institution, which offers 68 associate and transfer degree programs and an additional 81 professional and career certificates. And, whereas, CSM is recognized as a top transfer institution to state universities with San Francisco State University, San Jose State University, and University of California-Davis as the top three transfer schools for CSM students. And, whereas, CSM classes are valued by local high school students through middle college, concurrent with dual enrollment programs at Aragon High School, Hillsdale High School, and San Mateo Adult School, San Mateo High School, and Sequoia High School, which enables students to get a jump start on their college education. And, whereas, CSM is committed to respect, integrity, transparency, and inclusion, creating a campus culture that is anti-racist and equity-advancing, where students and employees who are Black, Indigenous, and people of color, LGBTQIA+, differently-abled, justice-impacted, and undocumented are included, embraced, and celebrated for who they are. And, whereas, CSM has collaborated with community partners such as Second Harvest Food Bank, the United Way of the Bay Area, Samaritan House, the San Mateo Credit Union, and the San Mateo Credit Union to expand its support services to include basic needs such as direct aid to low-income students and programs to provide financial literacy, food, and housing assistance, and mental health support. And, whereas, CSM stands ready to enter a new century of opportunities and challenges while continuing to provide a liberatory education to empower it now and for future generations. And, whereas, CSM continues to be a vital resource for the City of San Mateo and surrounding communities. And, final, whereas, the City of San Mateo has benefited from the educational opportunities, community partnerships, and economic mobility offered by College of San Mateo. Now, therefore, the City of San Mateo does recognize and celebrate College of San Mateo for its numerous contributions and the essential role it plays in the community. Celebrating College of San Mateo's 100th anniversary, the mayor of the City of San Mateo, Rick Bonilla, thank you very much, and you'll be receiving a copy of this, so.
Thank you so much.
I, I, as an individual, truly appreciate the great service that, that you are able to provide throughout San Mateo County to all the people who need, uh, this kind of help. It's, it's amazing what you do there, so thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on now to, thank you, to a presentation from the Police Department, the Digital Forensic Unit, Forensic Partner Award from US Secret Service. So I can introduce right now. It says Chief Barbarini here, but I think I saw Todd Mefford coming up.
Good evening, Mayor. I'll, I'll, I'll jump off.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for, uh, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge and receive of this award. This award is really about Annette Bingham, who is a police digital specialist with the, with the Police Department. Annette truly does a remarkable, remarkable job, and you'll hear about, uh, this briefly in a moment. Um, she does this behind the scenes without seeking any acknowledgement or fair, fanfare. Um, and the work she does, um, both in volume and in quality is incredible, even in comparison to other much larger agencies throughout Northern California. I'd like to briefly thank the Secret Service. Uh, they are a tremendous partner for us. Without their support, training, and resources, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, and they make us a better, a better organization and a better department. And we're better served to serve the residents of San Mateo due to their help. I am going to turn it over to Lieutenant Todd Mefford, who runs our Investigations Bureau and oversees our Digital Forensic Unit. Todd, it's all yours.
Hi, everyone. Todd Mefford over at the San Mateo Police Department in Investigations. Mayor, uh, Bonilla, thank you for having us. And City Council, Deputy Manager Corbett. It's, um, and Chief, thank you. Uh, this really is an honor personally received. I think it is well-deserved. Um, Annette Bingham has been with our Digital Forensic Unit since the inception, December, uh, 2014. And, uh, she's really a workhorse. Um, early on, we developed a partnership with. Through that partnership, we've got outstanding training, equipment. Um, and, and it, it doesn't stop. They're, they're for us all the time. And, um, we're the only full-time team in this county, and I think we're one of maybe three or four in the entire Bay Area. Um, so that's pretty remarkable seeing our size and, um, with the volume of stuff that we do, the volume of downloads that we do is pretty incredible, too. Just for instance, uh, we're receiving this award because we are the, um, the number-one, um, Digital Forensics Download Unit in Northern California. We're part of a task force, the Cyber Fraud Task Force with the Secret Service, and we're one of 60 other agencies that participate. We're number one. Last year, Annette was able to download 426, uh, electronic devices, and the next runner-up in there was 229. So we've almost doubled, um, our, our next in line. I'm really proud of. And then I, I do want to turn it over to, uh, Special Agent in Charge of the San Francisco Regional Secret Service, um, Sean Bradstreet. Sean?
Uh, thank you, Lieutenant, and, and Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, and Chief, thank you for having me on. Like, it's, it's really an honor to, uh, to come on here. Um, but really, it, it's just to thank Annette and the partnership that we have with San Mateo City Police Department. I mean, they've been tremendous. You know, we've been partners since 2014, and it's, uh, it's been one of the best things we've done for, for our agencies. And just to put it into perspective, we've talked about how much Annette has done here. Um, but I was really kind of blown away when the stats kind of came in for the year. But to put it in perspective, the, the Library of Congress, if you haven't been there, is the largest law library. And if you take all the, uh, books and law books that they have there, they've got like 40 million books, and then they got transcripts beyond that. But if you take everything written in the Library of Congress, which is really amazing and overwhelming, it, it equals about 10 terabytes of data. Um, so to put it in perspective, Annette, just in one year, um, examined over 56 terabytes. So that would be over like five times the Library of Congress. And it's just, it's an amazing amount of information and data that you actually got to go over and you've got to pour through, uh, with different softwares, of course, to pull out the evidence and the information that you need to actually, uh, charge people with, uh, with violent crimes, white-collar crimes. So again, e- even though you see like the, the news clips of all the arrests and everything that takes place in the county, i- it's really people like Annette behind the scenes that really pulls a lot of the information and evidence that we need for, uh, for trial and court. Um, you know, so she's been unbelievable. You know, she's actually going back to the National Computer Forensic Institute this summer, uh, which is sponsored by the Secret Service and Congress. So we pay for her flights to go back there per diem and hotel, and she's going to get about $30,000, $35,000 worth of equipment and new hardware and software that will be able to, uh, increase some of her capabilities. So, a- again, I just want to thank, thank you, thank Annette, the Police Department, um, you supporting the Police Department. I mean, she's making the city, the county, and the state and, and our country a safer place. Uh, so with that, thank you again. And Annette, I'll turn it over you, and, uh, I really appreciate it. I can't thank you enough, Annette.
Thank you very much. It's not just me, um, it's my colleagues that I work alongside. If it wasn't for them doing their job, I wouldn't be able to do my job. Um, it's a hard job, but I enjoy it, and it's something that I've always wanted to do. And I don't know if you can see it, but this is the plaque that was given to me by Secret Service for what I've done. This is something I'm very proud of and very appreciative of, and I thank the San Mateo Police Department and the city for allowing me to be here and do my job for you.
Thank you very much, Annette. Well-earned, well-earned. Um, I think we owe you a great, uh, debt of gratitude for all the hard work you've done in helping us and our Police Department to solve crime and keep San Mateo a safe place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other words, Chief Barbarini? I take it out.
No, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Annette. Well deserved, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay, everybody, now we're going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the Consent Calendar.
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council meeting minutes approval. Item number five, remote teleconference City Council and Commission Meetings Reauthorization. Item number six, ordinance adoption, accessory dwelling unit ordinance amendments. Item number seven, ordinance introduction, disposable food service ware code amendment. Item number eight, poplar at Golf Course Trash Capture Project, initial study mitigated negative declaration. Item number nine, facility naming policy adoption. Item number 10, Central Park Playground and Memorial Grove Final Design and Construction Management Service Agreement. Item number 11, Enterprise Resource Planning Software Licensing Maintenance and Support Services Agreement. Item number 12, State Route 92 and El Camino Real Interchange Landscape Improvement Projects Funding Agreement. Item number 13, State Route 92, El Camino Real Interchange Landscape Improvement Projects, Amendment Number Two. Item number 14, On-Call Professional Consultant Services. Item number 15, Off-Site Plan Review Services Amendment. Item number 16, Wastewater Treatment Plant Nutrient Removal and Wet Weather Management Upgrade and Expansion Project, Detroit Drive Public Right-of-Way Easement Dedication. Item number 17, Wastewater Treatment Plant Backup Generator Rental Change Order. Item number 18, East San Mateo Sanitary Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Project Amendment. Item number 19, City Library Finds Late Fee Elimination. Item number 20, Service Employees International Union Non-Merit Part-Time Unit Memorandum of Understanding Extension. Item number 21, San Mateo's Management Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number 22, San Mateo Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number 23, Interactive Pandemic Healing Art Wall Project Agreement. Item number 24, General Plan Housing Element and Housing Successor Agency 2021 Annual Progress Reports. And item number 25, Sidewalk and Pedestrian Mall Outdoor Dining Encroachment Permit Program Adoption.
Wow, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So now is the time to vote on the, uh, the Consent Calendar. First, let me see, is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? Please raise your hand if you do. Seeing none, then I need to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to pull any item for comment for the Consent Calendar. If there, if so, please raise your hand. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we see any hands raised?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. We usually allow comment at this time on any item on the Consent Calendar. So we can take comment, um, now on any item?
Yes. We have, I think, one hand raised.
Yes, sir. Uh, so one moment, please. Uh, Mr. Thays or Ms. Thays, if you could please go ahead and give your public comment.
Hi, thank you for the time and for taking my comment. Um, I'm the General Manager for Espetos Brazilian Steakhouse on 710 South B.
Oh, I'm so, I'm sorry. You're on the, you have to wait just about two minutes until after we vote on this item, and then you'll be able to speak under the general public comment. So please get off and then raise your hand again after we finish voting here, and then you'll be the first to talk. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other members of the public, Madam Clerk? Then we will close the public comment, and, oh, I'm sorry. We will go ahead to a vote. Move to through the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the vote.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, consent calendar is passed, and now we're on to the public comment. So the previous speaker, please go ahead and raise your hand if you want to speak. This is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, we have a speaker.
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Thays, I'll let you have permission to talk. Please unmute yourself.
All right. Thank you again. As I was saying, I'm the general manager for Espetos Brazilian Steakhouse at 710 South B. And I wanted to bring the issue up with all of you regarding the park ledge. Before anything, I want to thank you for allowing us to have the park ledge. It has helped us tremendously during these difficult times of COVID, allowing us to serve the public while COVID was still going on and all the regulations were taking place. It's now understood that we're allowed to extend the usage. However, the fact that it's been presented to me that one of the requirements is that we no longer carry a roof on the park ledge, which I've been talking to other restaurant owners in San Mateo, and that presents a huge issue for everybody, for all the owners, I should say. I've talked to both Park, Bistro, and also the owner for Pausa. And this is presenting an issue because some of our customers are still very nervous about coming in and dining inside. As a matter of fact, we have another location in San Francisco, and many of our customers are preferring to come to San Mateo precisely because we have an outside option. However, without a roof, that's going to prove impossible for us to keep that going. And so I would like to present the issue to all of you and to take into consideration. Also, we've tried to put umbrellas instead of a roof, but the umbrellas flew away, broke one glass for a customer, and that presented a safety issue as well. So I wanted to please ask all of you to take this into consideration, allow me to do whatever it takes, maybe an awning instead of a roof or whatever it takes. But it would be very important for us to be able to proceed with some coverage for our customers. And I don't think anybody likes to dine or eat without any coverage up on top. So that's the issue I'm presenting to all of you, and thank you again for hearing me.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Thays. Since this is the agenda item for items which are not on tonight's agenda, the council will not be able to comment, but we thank you for your comments. Everybody has heard them. We will take them into consideration, I think. Feel free to talk with staff or any council member that you choose to speak with. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other commenters, Madam?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to the next item under Old Business, item 26, Revenue Enhancement. It's a follow-up discussion. We'll have our finance director, Mr. Rich Lee, speaking.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the council. Rich Lee, the city's finance director. Item before you this evening is a follow-up item about revenue enhancement. Just by way of background, in May of 2020, the city council approved the Fiscal Sustainability Plan that was to provide some much-needed relief to the general fund, really in response to the immediate and severe impact of the pandemic. In October of 2021, the council considered four revenue enhancement options and directed staff to conduct community surveys on two of the options, sales tax and real property transfer tax. At the time, revenue enhancement was needed to provide additional resources in order to maintain core service levels. In January of this year, the council received the mid-year budget update, which projected an estimated $8.6 million in net change in fund balance for the general fund. Looking at the general fund long-term plan, which is a 10-year term, we do anticipate that in the next couple of years that we will continue to draw down on the rainy day reserve. However, by year four, we believe that the general fund will begin to break even and start to build back that rainy day reserve. And by the end of the 10-year term, we should be able to build back those reserves so that really, in sum, the general fund's financial condition has significantly improved to the extent that the revenue enhancement is not needed to maintain core service levels. However, the council may recall from two weeks ago the Community Opinion Survey results were presented, which included a number of priorities from the San Mateo community that required additional resources, including parks and open space areas, improving infrastructure, addressing traffic congestion. Also, on the same evening, the council also went back over the 2023 strategic plan, which included a number of priorities for the council that also need additional substantive additional resources, including the Marina Library structural issues, implementing the green fleet by 2030, and implementing bike and pedestrian projects. Going back over the two revenue enhancement options for the council, for the sales tax measure, the city's current sales tax rate is 9.65%. There is 0.25% in remaining add-on capacity. That means that by law, that it's limited to 2% above the state's base sales tax rate, and we have 0.25% remaining. If the council were to move forward with a sales tax ballot measure, it would generate somewhere between $6.5 to $7 million in additional revenues, and that's coming straight from our sales tax consultant based on our experience with Measure S. Over the past 20 years, on a statewide basis, sales tax measures have had about a 76% success rate. Looking at how San Mateo currently compares to its contemporaries in San Mateo County, we're right in the middle. There are approximately five cities in the county that are at the maximum rate. Looking at real property transfer tax, this shows five of the charter cities in the Bay Area that we compared to. The percentage that you see at the top, that's the terminal rate. So that's the maximum rate that they charge based on a tiered structure. For example, the city of Berkeley, any property less than or equal to $1.5 million is charged 1.5%. Anything above $1.5 million is at 2.5%. So in looking at some various scenarios for real property transfer tax, we need to take into consideration a few things specific to San Mateo. For San Mateo in 2021, the median sales price for a single-family home was $1.8 million. For a condo, that was just under $1 million. And for the past 20 years, for real property transfer tax ballot measures, their success rate has been just over half, over 50% success rate. We looked at a couple of scenarios. The first scenario is establishing, they're all established tiered structures for real property transfer tax. The first tier, the first scenario of the first tier establishes at $2 million. And if you'll, just wanted to draw a couple of things to the council's attention. First is that that represents 79.2%. Now, I'm taking the data set from the fiscal year 2020, 21 transactions that were subject to the real property transfer tax. So 79.2% of those transactions fall within this first tier. And just wanted to point out that with this tiered structure, 79.2% of those transactions, there would be no difference. So they would still remain at the half a percent rate. Looking at, and just want to summarize the scenario with, scenario one would generate approximately $6.8 million in additional revenue for the city. Scenario two, if you bring up the second, the first tier at $2.5 million, that would represent nearly 90% of total transactions. And again, there would be no difference for homeowners and property owners that's in terms of how much real property transfer tax they would pay. And in this third scenario, we increased the first tier to $3 million. And of course, the percentage of total transactions goes up to almost 95%. And that would generate $5.7 million in additional revenues. So the question before the council this evening, there are multiple questions. The first is, given that the general fund is in a better position and does not need the revenue enhancement to make sure to fund core services for the next 10 years, do you still want to move forward with the revenue enhancement community survey? If yes, then do you want to have a split survey where it's real property transfer tax for one portion of the city and a sales tax measure for the other portion of the city? Or do you want to just focus on one measure? Of note, if there is a split survey, the margin of error, as mentioned in the AR, does go up from 4% to 5.5%. But if you do want to move forward with a split survey, the staff's recommendation is to survey for two of the three RPTT scenarios and the sales tax measure. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation and welcome any questions in the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. I see Councilmember Rodriguez with a hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Lee. I have a question about the transfer tax, and I see in the report, and my apologies if I missed this somewhere, but it says that, you know, San Francisco, Berkeley, Oakland, Richmond, and San Jose have switched to the tiers. And at least for me, none of those are cities that I particularly hope that San Mateo emulates. What about like neighboring cities, like Burlingame, Foster City, and Belmont? Have they moved to the tiered system?
Thank you for the question. So there are two charter cities in the county of San Mateo. San Mateo being one, and City of Redwood City being the other. San Mateo, between those two, San Mateo is the only charter city where voters have approved a non-statutory real property transfer tax rate.
And non-charter cities don't have the choice?
Correct.
That was the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see it looks like Councilmember Gothols, question?
Rich, you mentioned that you're talking about core services, but one of the threats to core services are our debts and liabilities, our biggest being the unfunded pension liability. What is our current, what is the unfunded pension liability currently at?
So the unfunded pension liability is approximately $264 million. There are a number of things happened in the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021. One, the CalPERS Public Employees Retirement Fund recorded an investment return of 21.3%. So that amortized gain is going to be recognized over the next 20 years. That's going to help offset some of the amortized losses that CalPERS has been recognizing and we've been paying for quite some time. The other thing that happened was they have a policy that was triggered. That's the funding risk mitigation policy. So anytime that their return exceeds their discount rate, their expected rate of return greater than a certain percent, they automatically reduce their discount rate by, so it went from 7% down to 6.8%. That will actually offset some of the gains, some of the impact to pension contributions. We've already folded that into the Pension Outlook tool that CalPERS offers, and the net effect is, on an ongoing basis, by about five years from now, pension contribution rates will be approximately $4 million less than what we had projected where they would be a year from now, or a year from today.
It sounded like you were putting a big silver lining on that, on that $264 million pension liability.
There's a silver lining, and I don't want to get too optimistic because as of March 7, actually no, March 15, CalPERS year-to-date return is 0%.
Okay, that we're not in danger of hitting the threshold for reducing the rate, are we?
We are not.
Another thing that seems to be apparent is pretty high inflation at the moment. Would you consider inflation to be a risk to the city, especially, I mean, if we're trying to pay our employees a living wage and we see significant inflation, many of our sources of revenue lag, other economic factors, so that if we saw significant inflation, we would want to be paying our employees more money, but we would not have the ability to do that because of our lagging revenues. Is that true?
I'm going to answer your question with, if you asked me a year ago where inflation was headed, based on what the Fed's actions and strategies were, at the time, they believed that inflation was going to be a flash in the pan and that, yes, there would be a temporary spike, but it would subside rather quickly. Now, in hindsight, they're retracting that statement, and I recently attended a UCLA Anderson presentation where they specifically talked about inflation and where they projected it to be heading over the foreseeable future. They do see it subsiding, obviously not the precipitous fall that was once projected a year ago, but they do see it slowly subsiding. So we do not believe that, you know, these 7.9%, 40-year-high inflationary rates are going to continue. And that's going to be countered, we hope, by the Fed's actions of raising the federal funds rate. So that's a long way of saying we do not believe inflation will continue to rise at a meteoric rate that it has over the long term.
But that's one of the risk factors. That's one of the things that we're paying attention to to make sure that we can continue to fund core services is inflation, our significant pension liability. And then the last one, which I think you covered quite nicely in your presentation, and there's a slide for this, is the dramatic need for infrastructure investment. As we see electrification up and down the Caltrain corridor, we're at great risk without more grade separations of having 30-minute wait times on Third Avenue. And if people knew that, if anybody was paying attention, and I'm checking to see that we have 39 participants right now, if we had more people from the city understanding that as electrification goes forward, that we could have 30-minute wait times at Caltrain stops, that would blow people's minds, and they would understand that we need to invest in our infrastructure, whether it's the lagoon or Caltrain grade separations or other things. And I'm not suggesting that we have to come up with all of the funds through a property transfer tax, but I am suggesting that our funding measures, our revenues are more fraught than than maybe the short-term outlook is because we, it's not as bad as we thought it was going to be. I mean, that's always nice to say it's not as bad as we thought it was going to be, but it doesn't change the fact that we have a bayfront with rising oceans. We have significant lagoon issues that need to be addressed, grade separations that need to be built, and infrastructure problems that cost hundreds of millions of dollars and a significant pension liability. So I just want to make sure that we're mindful of the entire picture as we make this decision and put out our poll to the residents. I'm very interested in what residents have to say in this survey. Those are my questions. Thank you very much, Rich, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gothols. Next is Councilmember Lee. Joe, you can lower your hand, please.
Drew, did you want to chime in before I ask my question?
Yes, if I could, through the mayor. I just wanted to briefly address the inflationary concern. I think from my perspective, I'm actually thinking of it a little bit differently in terms of how the public sentiment will be about a potential sales tax increase given the inflationary environment and the fact that their dollar is not going as far as it was previously, and what the impact of an extra quarter cent would be on, you know, individuals' bottom line. So as Rich's presentation pointed out, over the last 20 years in California, sales tax measures have been very successful at over 75%. But I think if we were to poll on it, it will be certainly interesting to see what the current public perception is, you know, given the inflationary environment. So I just wanted to point that out.
Do you contrast that with a property transfer tax where inflation would not impact homeowners who are selling their homes as significantly?
I think that there would be different considerations from the people taking the poll there, and not necessarily inflation-related, but obviously kind of what it would mean to their bottom line when they, when they sold their property. And I think that, once we get into the comments portion and council starts to solidify on a direction, Rich and I may have some comments on some recommendations about what we poll on with respect to RPTT.
Thank you very much, Drew. Next council member for questions is Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Director Lee, I was hoping that you could expand on some of the wild cards in our budget, like the EREF changes that I think the public might not be aware of. There's, you know, as Councilmember Gothols discussed, our pension liability, then there's all of these other much more complicated, much less visible changes to like state financing and how, you know, how we get reimbursed or don't get reimbursed or made whole by the state. And I was hoping that you could shed some light on some of these other factors that should be top of mind for the public and for the council as we consider this.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I'd be happy to. I'll try to do this as briefly, but as succinctly as possible. So EREF, that's the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. That's been in place since 1992. Uh, that was largely a takeaway by the state uh, of local property tax dollars. Uh, it was an effort uh, because they could not balance their budget uh, on the backs of local government to fund their obligation for public school districts. Uh, that's, as um, San Mateo is one of only five counties in the entire state that actually generates more than enough uh, ERAF to provide so that non-basic aid school districts can meet their state man, state-determined minimum funding requirement. Um, the remainder, so there's about five non-basic aid school districts and the remainder are all basic aid. Which means that the remaining ERAF that's available uh, that um, only a portion is, is used to, to fund those non-basic aid school districts, gets returned back to the taxing entities. Uh, so again, San Mateo is only one of five. Um, the council may recall a number of, of letters of support that have been sent to various um, state representatives advocating for uh, a legislative change related to the Property Tax and new of VLF, which is a related but separate um, law that has been around since 2004. Uh, Property Tax and new, new of VLF uh, goes hand-in-hand with Prop 1A. Uh, that was the um, the agreement between the state government and local cities. Uh, the state took away VLF and in exchange, they provided property tax. That property tax comes from those same non-basic aid school districts. Um, the council, uh, all of the cities recently sent letters of opposition to a state proposal to uh, fund the uh, now ubiquitous VLF shortfall in San Mateo County, which again is the only county in the entire state that has this problem. And we're adding one uh, county to that now for the current fiscal year, which is Napa County. Um, we are the only two counties in the entire state that has this problem of VLF shortfall. The counties, um, sorry, the state's proposal, counter-proposal to the county's proposal is to use the excess ERAF to offset the VLF shortfall. Uh, to be clear, we are owed both of those revenue sources, uh, because those are both takeaways by the state. And the agreement back in 1992 and in 2004 is that we receive property check, property tax in exchange for those. Uh, so that's certainly a consideration that we need to, that has folded into our 10-year forecast. Um, that's currently where it stands. Uh, the county is trying to aggregate all of the responses of the cities and uh, to address this um, this counter-proposal from the state. And that's as of right now where it stands unless Drew has any additional updates from the City Managers Group.
And nothing further from me.
So, I mean, just, do you mind just bottom lining for us um, what that variable could be in, in the millions per year?
Yes. Uh, so to be clear, um, the shortfall for last fiscal year, countywide shortfall was $96.2 million. Uh, the city's share of that was $7.5 million of property tax. Um, to further quantify it, property tax and new VLF is 20% of our property tax. Property tax, again, is our number one revenue source for the general fund. Um, absent, without receiving that, um, in a timely manner, we have to file a claim with the state at the end of the fiscal year for those dollars. Um, I want to emphasize a, we file a claim and the state uh, considers that as a part of their um, proposed budget for the subsequent fiscal year. Um, right now, you know, for the past couple of years, the state has had significant budget surpluses. So uh, consideration of a, you know, going back two years, a $10 million VLF shortfall, a $100 million budget uh, of VLF shortfall was uh, was relatively insignificant to their $30 billion budget surplus. However, in future fiscal years, uh, the state may not be in the same position that they are as of today. And the VLF shortfall is projected to grow. Um, as of right now, it's $56.5 million. Um, within 10 years' time, the county projects that every single remaining non-basic aid school district will become basic aid. And that VLF shortfall will grow from uh, 56.5 to very easily 250 to 300 million dollars countywide. Um, our share of that proportionally is about 18 to 19 million dollars. So to forego 18 to 19 million dollars uh, every, every year and not be made whole until two years later, and there's no guarantee of that, is quite um, worrisome.
Right. Um, and, and just to kind of put it again into perspective, you know, um, seven, you know, if we're talking about this fiscal year, what is, you know, $7 million as a percentage of the general fund?
So the general fund's uh, adopted budget for revenues is about $140 million. So to, to forego, uh, to have to wait, you know, two years for that revenue, uh, it presents a cash flow problem, but in the future, uh, absent any legislative fix, uh, or what, worse, um, the city, the, the state's counter-proposal, um, right now, it presents a cash flow problem. Uh, if the state's proposal were to be passed into law, we would, uh, the net effect is a million-dollar loss every year.
Right. And then also, um, aren't we projecting a 7% increase for healthcare expenses a year over year?
That's, that's correct. Uh, if I looked at the, the actuarial valuation that we have for our other post-employment benefits, our OPEB uh, liability, uh, the actuaries look at the healthcare, projected healthcare rate increases for the next 30 years. Uh, and yes, you're correct. It is a 7% projected rate increase for the current fiscal year, declining by about half a percent increase, I say that carefully, declining by a half a percent increase uh, year over year until the terminal rate of about 4.5% in 2035.
Okay. And then my last question, because of your encyclopedic brain on our budget, is um, do you happen to know offhand how many millions of dollars of projects, CIP projects are unfunded?
So if you look at the uh, the adopted budget book for the current fiscal year, uh, there's a section on, on unfunded CIP projects. Uh, the sum of that for the five-year period, the five-year CIP is about $318 million.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, Deputy Mayor Papin, I think you're up next. No, okay, she's taking it past. Okay, I think that leaves me. I just have one more question, I think, because it sounds like most things have been covered very thoroughly. But would it be true, uh, Director Lee, that the city is also experiencing inflation and thusly our dollars are going to be going less far as the general public's dollars are, which is another reason why we need to seek some additional revenues?
Yes, uh, we are subject to the same uh, economic forces that our, our residents in our community are experiencing in terms of our buying power.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, seeing no other hands, I think we'll go to public comment on this issue. Madam Clerk, do we have hands raised?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised at this time. And if Rich Hedges would like to go ahead and provide his comments.
Thank you very much. I have been listening carefully. By the way, just a suggestion, a lot of acronyms flowed from everyone tonight. And if at least one time we announce what those acronyms mean for the general public, I know most of them, but I'm sure there's people tearing their hair out right now. So further with my comments on this, uh, I'm looking at both ways to raise money. Uh, I know that, for instance, where I live, the buildings across the street from me in the last five years, no longer than that, have sold three times, most recently in January of 2021. Uh, Shopping Center sold three times, uh, 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard is just recently sold again, those two buildings. So the uh, transfer tax is a great boon, at least right now, for the city. I think it's the most probably digestible for most people in San Mateo. Uh, but it may be the harder one to win because there will be some strong forces that will be opposing it uh, without a good explanation of what this tax means to everyone. I would caution you, though, on the sales tax as opposed, because at least half of our residents are renters and they're struggling. And a sales tax affects everybody. Uh, the uh, transfer tax only affects those people leaving the city on housing usually, not always, but usually. And uh, usually the transfer tax only affects large businesses here, especially with these office buildings. And in the case of the buildings across the street from me, with a large uh, a large fund who purchased them. So again, I'm just very, I'm, I'm very uh, and very equity concerned, as I well, as well I know, all of our city council members have about what tax increases mean to the least of us here in the county and the ones struggling. On the other hand, we may have a much harder time passing the transfer tax because of the money that will come in for the opposing side. So I think you need to weigh this very carefully on an equity basis and also on a basis of whether uh, we uh, uh, we'll be able to pass one or the other of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. Okay, so back to the council for um, final comments.
Mr. If I may, through the mayor, I just wanted to address uh, one of Mr. Hedges' comments.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, just to be clear, uh, what's customary in the city of San Mateo is that the transfer tax is split between the seller and the buyer. That's what's customary, but it is subject to negotiation.
Thank you very much, Rich. Okay, so I want to point out that this is informational. Uh, we're providing information to staff regarding council's thoughts on the issues presented. Uh, Deputy Mayor Papin, please go ahead.
Um, so I would support exploring it. I, I, I don't think going towards the ballot without um, some sort of polling i- is a good idea. Um, so my, my inclination is to explore it. Um, and I think you all had some thoughts about uh, there were three options for a transfer tax, so I'd like to hear what you think about polling with respect to those three. And I thought that maybe you were thinking two options under the parcel and one under the uh, sales tax. I, I mean, I'm not prepared to make any decisions until I see what polling says. These are very precarious times. I recognize we have tremendous needs as a city, not only just to keep going, but to do some of our long-term projects that are long overdue. But I, we gotta, we gotta get a, a, um, a read on the temperature of uh, what is possible.
Thank you very much. I see Councilmember Goldfolds next.
Rich, can you put the last slide up again?
Yep, me too.
Yes, I would move forward with a survey. Uh, split the survey and pull both. And I, and I accept staff's recommendation. I think it's a good recommendation.
Thank you. Joe, do you have any opinion on the uh, three alternatives on the uh, excuse me, the um, uh, transfer tax?
Rich, could you go back to those? Sorry.
No problem. Let's see.
I like uh, tiers and
So this is the first tier at 2 million, second tier at two and a, sorry, second scenario at two and a half, and third scenario at three.
Um, two and a half and three is where I would be, I think.
I would concur.
Thank you, Diane, for saying that.
Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, is that what it is?
That's it, exactly.
I'll keep practicing.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next we have Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, I, I kind of feel that since um, our economic outlook is significantly better than it was when we first started floating the idea uh, to raise taxes. Since it's changed so significantly, um, I, and I think given that uh, the current financial outlook that our finance director um, just presented to us, I, I don't think it's necessary now to pursue asking taxpayers to pay even more, especially now that we are recovering um, from the COVID pandemic. So um, i- if we do end up ser- surveying, um, I think it's going to be important to, to echo what some people against this tax uh, might be, and it, and I might be one of them, um, that, that our outlook is a lot better than we were expecting it. So um, it's not like we're going to be able to say, oh, because of COVID, um, we, we, we have to forget this, or we have to ask for, for more. So um, that's like where I stand right now. Um, if we do end up going to ask the public, I'll be interested to see what they have to say.
Okay, thank you. Next is Councilmember Lee.
Um, so I, I certainly support um, pursuing the questions and um, and I, I think doing the split poll is a great idea. And um, and I would agree with Councilmember Goldfolds about um, selecting the 2.5 and the three, 3 million um, starting place for the tiers.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee. Um, I like what she just said. So that said, I think we have to ask you, Rich, and uh, City Manager Corbett, have you heard what you need to hear?
Yes, we have. We have the direction we need and um, uh, staff, staff's recommendation was, was going to be to be the two and a half and the three as well. It gets 90, 90% of, of home sales currently would fall into the first tier and keep them at the 0.5%.
Correct.
So, so we will proceed as, as directed and we're, would, will return with the results uh, as soon as they're available.
And let's keep them at the 5%, meaning no increase. We need to be really on message about that.
Right, exactly. Most people, by huge majority, would not see any property tax increase upon sale of property. Okay, good. So now we move on to item 27, which is stormwater funding and survey findings. So I think we're going to be hearing from Sarah Scheit presenting.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor, Mayor Binia. My name is Sarah Scheit. I am the Regulatory Compliance Manager for the city of San Mateo. And tonight I will be presenting our uh, stormwater funding survey results to you. The basic agenda for tonight's presentation, I'll give you a little bit of a background and history on the project and uh, go over again what our stormwater funding analysis was. We'll then move into the actual stormwater survey results and our recommended next steps. So this process started back in 2018 when we were just looking at the Marina Lagoon and its issues with filling in with sediment. Uh, back in 2018, we conducted a feasibility study to evaluate the dredging options and their costs, which turned out to be very expensive and had no funding source. And initially, we had planned to follow up by conducting a funding analysis for the dredging only, when we realized there were other storm system activities and projects that were also important that did not have a funding source. Some of those uh, stormwater activities include just the regular ongoing operation of Marina Lagoon and the creeks, our capital improvement uh, programs and master planning, green infrastructure and infrastructure construction, operations and maintenance of our conveyance system, all of the trash reduction mandates and regulatory compliance with the municipal regional stormwater permit. And of course, the Marina Lagoon dredging had the biggest price tag. So this evolved into a comprehensive storm system evaluation, consisting of a needs assessment and an evaluation of funding options for all of the storm system activities. So just to overview, we, we did bring the uh, needs analysis to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission back in December of 2020. We then brought it, uh, the storm system funding analysis to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission in February of 2021. Brought that same analysis to a study session with council in May of 2021. At that point, council directed us to move ahead with the uh, uh, public opinion survey, which we completed in November of 2021. We took the results of that survey to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission on March 9th of 2022. And we're here to present it to you today and then to talk about our recommended recommended next steps. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jerry Bradshaw. He's our consultant with SCI Consulting to go over the community survey.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to prevent, present our, our findings here. Before I go into the survey itself, I want to do just a minute or two on why we're even doing a survey. We're contemplating a revenue measure for storm drainage and stormwater services, and that winds up being oftentimes like a user fee, like you have for water services, sewer services, and garbage services. But there's a quirk in Proposition 218 that was sorted through by the courts in the early 2000s that said that stormwater fees needed to be submitted to voter approval, unlike water fees and garbage fees. So because in order to develop a funding source for stormwater, you'd be going through a ballot measure, it was prudent to do a community opinion survey, much like you were just talking about on your previous slide. So I just wanted to set that groundwork as to why we're even talking about community support and balloting. Now, the survey, we ended up with two separate surveys. One focused on the overall stormwater needs that Sarah just highlighted a moment ago, and then one focused strictly on the Marina Lagoon needs there. And that was a lagoon-centric survey. So we bifurcated our survey into two parallel surveys. Each were, we mailed out 5,000 mailed surveys, and we did mail surveys because it mimics what the mail, mail-in ballot process would ultimately be, regardless of which direction you go. Why do we do this? We, we're trying to learn the community priorities. I spent over a year working with your staff to learn what the, what the priorities were coming out of City Hall for the storm drainage system, but it's important to know that the community, that their priorities align with what City Hall wants, because if they don't align, then you got a square peg in a round hole and you're kind of doomed. So it's important to learn what their priorities are. We tested different messages, and we tested their willingness to invest or willingness to pay a fee. Our goal was to narrow options down so we could focus from here on out just on one path forward, whether it's a fee or an assessment or something else. We also tested a lot of projects and issues as far as what sort of support there were for those and which ones resonated with the community and which ones didn't. Finally, we mailed the surveys out on November 5th. We wanted to get them in before the big distraction of Thanksgiving and the holidays, and we were successful because we had a pretty good return rate. We had about 15% of the surveys returned, and with that good return rate, our margin of error was below 4%. It was in a 3.5% range on each of the two surveys. So just a quick review of the financial analysis we did last year. We evaluated what your storm drainage program was at the time, was about a $3 million per year operation. We looked at all the aspects, not just the Marina Lagoon needs, but also operational enhancements and all the other capital projects that have not been getting done for lack of funding. And we came up with a total need of about 8.4 million. And that's broken up in the three main categories. Operations and maintenance, about 3.5 million. The lagoon dredging, we simmered that down to an annual lifecycle cost that could be invested either each year or save up for a couple of years and do work on an annual basis, because the siltation of the lagoon doesn't end. It will just keep coming, and you need to look at a lifecycle approach on that. Plus two, almost 3 million for the other capital projects. That translated into a dollar, $192 per year rate for the average home, and we scaled that so the other properties would pay their proportionate share too. And those 192 is divided up across the bottom, as you see it. Because the city will be looking at a ballot measure, we wanted to see what other cities have done in this situation, just like you did with your sales tax and your TOTs. We went to look at the history. Unfortunately, it's a very short history. All across the state, in the last five years, these are the only stormwater ballot measures we're aware of. And actually, Burlingame is an older one from 2009. So of the 11, only 10 of them have gone forward in the last five years. You see the annual rate there for the average home, and the highest one is Palo Alto down here at $164. Now, that was the rate in 2017. It's probably prepped up for cost of living increases, and it might be close to the $192 rate that we were looking at for your city. The three that have lines through them were the three that were defeated at the ballot box. And it doesn't seem to correlate with the level of the rate. I think there's a lot more going on in these communities where it failed. Two of those were projects I worked on, and I'm fully aware of some of the little intricacies and lessons learned that we can help bring forward to this. San Bruno was one I did not work on, but we did have a lessons learned session with the city manager there after that thing failed. But I just want to state here, the $192 is on the high end. It's a pretty big ask for voters, judging by the history we've seen. One last note is that cities who have no previous fee, who are instituting a brand-new fee at whatever level, they struggled. The Maraga and Los Altos were in that boat. So two of the three that failed, that might have been one of the key measures. All these other cities had a fee in place that they were augmenting or increasing or adding to. So that's just another bit of uphill battle that the city might be facing. So we did our survey. I'm going to go through the stormwater survey. We'll get to the lagoon-centric survey in a moment. So the stormwater findings, I want to show you what all these bright colors mean here. We have two bars. One is for the $192 rate on the right, and the bar on the left is for the 120 per year rate. The dark green shows the people who said they definitely would support that rate. The light green, they said they probably would support it. And conversely, the orange is for probably no, and the red is for definitely no. And as is common with these, that red zone is usually the biggest zone on there. Those are the people who are fairly well entrenched and you're not likely to change their mind, except maybe a little on the edges. For a ballot measure like this, you're looking for a 50% threshold in order for it to pass. So you don't have a 2/3 threshold to face, but 50% is tough enough as it is. And what we found for support, if you add the two greens together, you wind up at the $120 level, came up very, very close to the 50% threshold. And the $192 level, as understandably, came in with a little less support, although not tremendous. But there's another factor. We have a margin of error of 3.4%. So if you kind of draw these little fuzzy zones around those lines, ideally, you'd like to have that whole margin of error zone above the 50% threshold to feel confident that your measure's got enough support to proceed. A $120 level is kind of iffy at that point, and the $192 level is probably a, a pretty big ask, and we wouldn't recommend certainly going that high. So that's the support level you have. I just want to mention one more thing. With the survey that went out, we didn't state it as an annual amount. We stated it as a monthly amount. So the $120 per year rate was stated as $10 per month, and conversely, the other one was $16 per month. But we converted everything to annual so we can compare this one with the lagoon and not have confusion as we go forward. So in addition to the, the basic question on willingness to invest, we asked another 10 questions that posed statements about issues or projects or other elements of the stormwater program to see which ones resonated with the public. So the way these broke down, now, we don't have a 50% or any kind of threshold to meet. We're just trying to gauge which ones fared better and which ones didn't fare as well. The dark green meant that an issue would make the voter much more likely to support it. The light green meant that that issue would somewhat more likely help them support it, and conversely, on the orange and red side. So we broke it into three groups. This is just the way they broke out. The top three, which resonated the best with the community, actually has a very broad base. The first one dealt with local flooding and aging infrastructure. That's very common for cities to support brick-and-mortar type projects that they can see happening. They feel big things better. Remove trash and pollution, that's an environmental concern. So that's another good response. And then the third one is the funds are dedicated. They cannot be taken by the state, the county, or even the city council. If this is passed, they are to be dedicated to stormwater only. You can't divert funds for buying police cars or playgrounds. It has to stay there. So that's a fiscal responsibility approach. So that's a very strong base on which to build a ballot measure. I'm going to jump to the bottom three, and keep in mind, these are just some key words. The actual question, I think, were shown in your council packet, so you can read through the full question, because there's some nuances there that could make a little difference to how people respond a bit. I think the key words are important. What you see at the bottom, the common word with those bottom three is lagoon, lagoon, lagoon. So what we found, when we issued, surveyed everyone for stormwater system issues, is that paying for lagoon dredging, even enhancing the recreational opportunity at the, at the lagoon, did not fare as well, although they still had a little bit more support than non-support. But these are issues that won't go away. You just need to be ready to address them. The ones in the top tier, you probably want to use those as a basis for developing community outreach. The one in the bottoms, you need to be ready to address those because they may very well come up. So the lagoon-only funding, we did this a little different type of structure. We did it as a benefit assessment. Benefit assessments are not really appropriate for stormwater funding, but for recreational aspect, they're quite, used quite often, similar to landscaping and lighting assessments. It's that type of assessment for recreational features. So it was intended to fund the Marina Lagoon lifecycle cost, which, as I mentioned earlier, 1.9 million per year. We developed a preliminary three-tiered assessment structure. If you lived on the lagoon, we figured you might be willing to pay more to have a lagoon that functions well, is healthy, and is sustainable and attractive as a community of energy at $150. If you're within walking distance, you're more likely to use the lagoon. We figured that might be worth a $50 investment. And then everyone else in town would pay just a nominal $10 per year. These are annual amounts, by the way, compared to the 120 and 192 we saw in the other one. That revenue would only generate about fi, a half a million dollars. So that doesn't really come close to the 1.9 million that we need for the lagoon. So we did a second tier of rates based on a $350 lagoon frontage, down to $23 for everyone else in town. That would generate 1.2 million. It still falls short of the 1.9, but staff felt that they could do some real work with that and make some headway on the lagoon. So here's the findings for the lagoon survey. Still with the benefit assessment, it's a 50% threshold that you're aiming for, and the lower rate of $10 gained about almost 55% and the $23 rate, only 51%. They're both above the 50%, and if you added the margin of error section around it, the $10 rate still survives that test and start, and looks pretty strong. On the issues for the lagoon, again, we broke it into groups. Those top four were very similar to what we saw in the stormwater. Environmental issues, flood control capacity, and fiscal responsibility. On the bottom, it was a comment that said it pays for lagoon dredging, and that didn't fare too well. And this was a lagoon-centric survey with an information item that talked about the benefits of taking care of the lagoon. And then we also put another, kind of a negative question in there to see how people respond to that, is that because the funding would fall short of our 1.9 million goal, we stated that another fee may be needed because of the inadequacy, and that fared very badly. You can see that the negative impact on the measure was bigger than anything else we saw here. So that's an issue that would have to be addressed if we move forward here. But really, when you look at, that's the core work. The dredging is the core work for this whole thing, and it doesn't fare very well at all. So we sort of take this as a bit of a poison pill approach to this whole thing. So we'll address that as we get into the, to the recommendations. So just to sum up, the lagoon results are higher, but the revenue potential is much less. Stormwater results are below the comfort zone, but the lower rate, if you lower the rate, you can bring, help maybe garner a little more support. I'd also say that between now and whenever any ballots went out, there would be a pretty robust outreach program to help educate people on what the stormwater system is. Most people don't even realize it's a thing, let alone that it's an important thing. Stormwater projects and issues, the top tier included flooding, environmental, fiscal responsibility, again, this is summary, and the lagoon work has little support in the whole spectrum of stormwater. The lagoon projects, again, the top tier included those same three items, and the bottom tier included the dredging itself and the inadequacy of that whole funding structure. So our recommendations are this. We recommend at this point, you move away from the lagoon assessment, at least for now. It could be used maybe in the future, maybe take a fresh look. Has low revenue potential and would likely need another fee to help make it adequate. Plus, there's very little support for the actual core work, the dredging, which is understandable. People who live in a neighborhood or in a town and think of dredging, it's a messy, noisy, long-term project, and they're right, it can be. So it's not surprising that that doesn't have a lot of support. We further recommend you move forward on a stormwater fee project. We recommend you reduce the rate down to a little over, little under $100 per year or about $8 per month, although we have to evaluate the impacts to see what, make sure we can still fund an adequate program and that it's worth your while. So that evaluation is still ongoing, and we'll be working over that, through that in the next couple of months. And then we also recommend you initiate a robust community engagement program, although that will be staged. We would start out easy with a, maybe just a branding program, just to introduce the, the system to the people without bringing up fiscal need. We'll definitely coordinate it with other issues and priorities in the city, such as the tax measure you were talking about earlier tonight. In any event, we would schedule the balloting to happen not at the November elections. A Prop 218 ballot is, has another quirk, and that is not done at the polling place, and it can happen anytime during the year, it's not tied to election dates. So we would recommend you push this until after the election season at the very earliest. In fact, let's go through a real quick timeline. So starting now, looking in the future, we recommend that you continue with the fee study, which is already underway. This is tonight's meeting, where we're presenting to the council and looking for some direction on whether to go forward. We do anticipate possibly coming back to Sustainability Infrastructure Commission, maybe in the summer, as we get further into the fee study and no more, and get ready for a council presentation in the fall with a study session to introduce the, the full range of fee studies and some recommendations, and then possible approval on the rates with a nod to go ahead with the Prop 218 balloting process. However, we would recommend that that be delayed until 2023, and you would maybe as early as January, send out a notice, conduct your public hearing maybe in March, and then continue with the balloting for another couple of months beyond that, and conclude everything in the late spring. This all would get put, if this passes, that would get put onto the property tax bills. There is an annual deadline in August for that to happen, regardless of when you have this election, as long as you make that August deadline with all the procedures, you're in for the 2023 slash 24 fiscal year to begin funding. So that's a, a summary of the timelines. One last comment, we did go to the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission early in the month. They had a pretty strong support of the staff recommendation with a lower fee, robust outreach, robust outreach strategy, and possible spring 2023 ballot measure. They also recommended that the staff continue to explore partnerships with CK, the county, or even Foster City, your neighbor on the other side of the lagoon. So with that, I think I will hand it back to Sarah in case there's something I forgot to mention.
Thanks, Jerry. I just wanted to clarify that our recommendation of moving forward with the stormwater fee and not the lagoon assessment, I want to clarify that that stormwater fee would include work on the lagoon, including dredging. So it's by not doing the Marina Lagoon assessment does not exclude that work from getting done. The stormwater fee would be a much larger income from the, the entire city versus just the lagoon residents. So the whole city would, would be taking on that burden versus just the residents of the lagoon, which I believe is what those residents generally support. So just wanted to throw that in there. Other than that, that concludes our presentation.
Councilmember Lee, please go ahead with your question.
Thank you, and also thank you, Sarah, for clarifying that upfront for our, our folks in the lagoon. I'm, I'm hoping that's reassuring. So I had a, a question for Mr. Bradshaw. I'm just curious how you landed on the $100 number, because it, it looked like you polled for 120 and 192. So I'm just, I guess I'm, I, I would love to hear the, you know, what sort of the rationale is and what gives you confidence that at that number, we would have a, you know, a passing proposal?
Sure, that's a very good question. The, there, we typically see in these surveys a relationship between the amount of fee or tax that you're asking for and the support. The higher the amount, the lower is the support. So you, with the two points we have, you can kind of establish some sort of relationship between the two. But as you lower the fee, so you expect the support to go up a little bit, but when you drop But when you drop below uh triple digits per year or double digits per month and go into the next tier of digits, you get a little extra psychological boost from, sometimes from these things. So we think by dropping below $100 or below $10 per month, that you'll get a little extra boost other than the natural curve that you have. Um, so there's, there's that element. I don't have empirical data for that, but it's something we see time and time again. Um, I would also point out that uh uh an hour, this survey was done cold. We didn't do a lot of outreach ahead of time. Basically, the people who responded to the survey only had the information piece, and probably most of them didn't read it all. They read the head, the headers and, you know, some of the graphics and went through. So we expect people to be much more educated by the time any sort of ballot measure is done.
Thank you. And then just remind me again, what what were we um considering or what were you recommending in terms of um any kind of escalator tied to CPI or um, you know, how how would that be addressed? And and also my second kind of related question is because we would be starting um this from scratch and we've seen some of those other um uh cities fail, would you, you know, is there, is there a strategy that we should be considering that would start lower and then have um a a more aggressive escalator baked in? Um.
Yeah, that's another really good question. We've approached this as developing a hypothetical enterprise fund or utility fund, much like your sewer utility. And to run a utility using a CPI index to escalate your rates is a not a very good way of running it. But unfortunately, with the ballot requirement on stormwater fees, it's sort of the best we have. Because you can lay out maybe the first five years of rates. Now, keep in mind, you're also not tied to five years at a time like you are with sewer rates or garbage rates. So you can go beyond that, but you need to tie it to some sort of formula or index upfront. And typically, we use the CPI. It's not great, but it's kind of the best we have. There are other indices out there like the Construction Cost Index, and it fluctuates a little more radically, although over the past 30 years, it's comes in almost identical to the CPI. So we factored in a CPI range of about 2.7% annual, which is sort of a 30-year average, knowing that you probably tap it at 3%, and you lose a little along the way. And we use that to model out the 30-year model during the financial plan.
Okay, and my last question is just to remind folks, who would be paying?
Another good question. Um, as a utility fee, it's not restricted to just taxable parcels. It would be it, we would do it on a parcel basis because it would go on the tax bill. You don't have a utility billing system, and it's not worth trying to develop one for this when the tax bill system is perfectly adequate. But all parcels that contribute to the burden on the stormwater system would need to pay, including public agencies, commercial properties. The city itself would have a a fee burden on this, just like you do for your water bills. So that would come back into the city and end up probably being a general fund burden, although you're only a small part of the city. So it would be basically everyone that contributes stormwater into the system, virtually all properties in town.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee. Uh, Deputy Mayor Papman.
So just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Um, number one, how long this would be in perpetuity until?
Until repealed by voters. Yeah, it's a voter-approved measure, so.
Okay, and uh is it the kind of thing that you could bond against?
Yes, that's, that's commonly done for the few that actually have these in place. Um, it's interesting you mentioned in perpetuity that actually Palo Alto did part of their rate with a sunset clause. And it's the part of the rate that funds their capital program. So because they had a 15-year sunset, they weren't going to go out and take on any debt longer than 12, 13 years, which meant no debt. They were just going to do pay-as-you-go. So if you're going to do any debt financing, which uh up until just very recently was a very favorable way to look at this because interest rates were very close to S, you know, in inflationary rates. So it was almost free, free money in the long term, but uh that's definitely something you could do.
And then if you could, uh, I want to make sure I understand. It would be that there would be an education um component uh that would go out to the public and then uh another round of polling. Is that correct?
We could do another round of polling, and given recent um uh concerns around inflation and the international scene that could affect all that, we may do another round or a tracker poll. It would be a little briefer. You know, be more focused on just the singular activity that we're going after, but that might not be a bad notion as we come into uh later in the process.
And would you find that uh if you did some education on the front end, it it, is it more accurate?
Is, I'm sorry, is what more accurate?
Is the polling results there? There, they would be more informed polling results if you did some education on the front end, fair to say?
Yes, we've done it both ways. Typically, uh, a lot of the things that we work with through our firm deal with things like stormwater and benefit assessments that are not widely known. So education can make a big difference on those. Um, and a lot of times you can move the needle after the survey, and we have done tracker surveys to help demonstrate that. But pretty by and large, we find that our surveys are are fairly well predictive.
Okay. And then I guess one more question that I might have. Um, do you see that if there was a way of capturing stormwater and then perhaps reusing the stormwater, is that something that would be worth testing?
It would. Um, I don't know that you have much opportunity on the drawing board to really ask those questions. At, when you ask these questions, it's sort of like a promise that you could do it. And we want to be careful not to get out over our skis too far on such thing. We try and stay on the conservative side. Uh, obviously, stormwater recapture reuse. I mean, stormwater is getting bigger than just stormwater anymore, which is one of the dilemmas we have in the coming decades. So that's built in just a little bit. Um, you know, it ties to climate change. It ties to environmental, it ties to land use policies. I mean, stormwater is getting very big for its britches, but this is a good start to get going. Um, and it's kind of a take what you can, work with what you can get, and then build for whatever is the next step in the future.
So this is just a channeling at this moment in time that we're sort of floating out there, if you will excuse the pun.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I got you. Thank you so much, Mr. Bradshaw. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Other council members, questions? Okay, seeing none, then I believe we'll go ahead and go to the uh public comment on this. Madam Clerk, do we have hands raised for a public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do. Mark R will be our first speaker.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. Uh, if you want to put this thing forward where it's it's more palatable, um, we all pay uh a a fairly uh heavy tax on our sewer taxes. And uh my understanding is that's going to be grandfathered out. Um, and that would be a more opportune time to sell this thing than to say, okay, we're going to hit it, uh, we're going to add on top. Um, the other thing is, have you, have any of you investigated if there's infrastructure funds available from the feds? That might be somewhere to to look for money because the appetite here for higher taxes uh from my view is zero. It's going to be dead on arrival. And it's not just that. A higher sales tax, dead on arrival. People are leading the state because of taxes. And it's, it's a very bad time to even think about raising taxes. Um, and my last comment is, and I know you're not going to like this, but we talk about on the um on the revenue side, but what about the expenditures, the uh expenditure side? Um, are there places that you can find money um and and may cut back on certain things? Uh, I know it's hard for all of us, but we all try to live within our means. So those are my comments. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Hi, thank you again. First, I want to thank Sarah. She's kept in contact with our group on the east side, and I think she does a good job. And generally, uh, the operation of the lagoon is done pretty well. We've had a couple of of uh issues over years where either pumps failed or been clogged with the with debris in the early part of the year because everything drains from the city into the lagoon, good or bad. So uh, just a couple of comments about the polling. When, before anybody that's on the council now was on, we ran a measure to fix the uh the 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 levies in San Mateo to get a large swath of people in San Mateo from paying flood insurance and to harden the infrastructure against flooding. And that polled very badly, even on the east side. And quite quickly, the reason tax expenditures polled badly on the east side is that's the side of our city that's struggling. They're the workers who do the things we need to have done in the city, and they're on the margins. Uh, but when we did the actual measure, it passed by 80%. So part of it is just education, and if it's done right by community people, it changes the game. And I just want to remind you, because I like to tell people this that haven't been in the city a long time, that before the lagoon was dredged, Fiesta Gardens, where it is now, uh, 19th Avenue Park, Sunny Bray, Glendale Village, San Mateo Village, uh flooded every time we had a big rain. And not, not lightly. Ernie Hills, who was a advocate for a lot of things in this city, has passed away now, told me that he would wade waist-deep in Sunny Bray around his house at times when it flooded. So, so this lagoon has removed a lot of danger from people other than living by the lagoon. And if that's allowed to silt up completely, those dangers will return. So uh, we need to think about this uh citywide. And as far as reusing the stormwater, it's one of the most polluted tributaries in the, in the, in the, in the state. So we, and a lot of that is because of the broken uh piping upstream, the the broken lateral. So we, I would love to see the water reused, but it's going to take some uh strong uh fixing of the uh of the water before we can use it for anything other than flowing out to the bay. So thank you very much, and I know you guys have got a tough job ahead of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rich, Mr. Mayor, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So back to council members. Remember, this isn't informational item. There's going to be no motion. We need to offer our thoughts to stash on this. Who wants to be first?
We, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you think we could have that timeline up again?
Sure. Let's see if we can get it.
Well, is that up and showing now?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you very much.
So the question at hand is, would we pursue a further study session in the fall as it relates to, uh, I guess we're going to, we have to decide. Do you want us to decide whether or not it should be all Laguna or an entire stormwater program to pursue further? Are you looking for direction on that? Excuse me?
I, I think what we're looking for is support for our recommendation to move forward with just the stormwater fee, which would include Marina Lagoon, but not a separate Marina Lagoon survey. We would do uh robust public outreach and continue with the fee study, which would hash out the details of how much we would be asking for and what services that would provide. And then we could come to you again uh in a study session, or we could come to you in a regular meeting and uh, you know, ask you for your approval to send out the notice. Uh, we could, we could do both, or we could do just, just come back once.
Your recommendation is your recommendation because it's the most likely to succeed based on the polling, right?
It's most likely to succeed, and it's the, yeah, I think we would have a strong opposition to the Marina Lagoon only funding, and it wouldn't cover all of our needs for that, what we would need to conduct that work anyway. And it wouldn't cover any of the other stormwater um activities that we don't have funding for.
So it's most comprehensive, sorry.
Yeah, likely to succeed as well as adequacy, the sort of the two coupled together.
It's the most comprehensive, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, so I could live with uh going with the full stormwater uh program, which includes the marina and um uh to study it further so that we can um whittle it down to what we think would be the most palatable to to proceed with.
I agree with the recommendation on this timeline that's on the screen right now. So I I also agree.
Okay, let me cut in here for a minute, if you don't mind, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez. I have a question. I want to go back just a little bit. Uh, Mr. Bradshaw, how did we decide to bifurcate and split the lagoon, the stormwater storage basin facility from the storage water collection system? How did we do that?
Yeah, it was a a long discussion. We uh, we recognized that the lagoon had a couple of phases. It's obviously a drainage and flood control uh facility, but it also, at the same time, is a recreational facility. And that uh kind of lends itself to a different funding scheme and also a different approach into its appeal on how you sell it.
Okay, although, although, Mr. Bradshaw, I think, would you agree that that function is secondary?
Um, as a former Public Works Director, I would tend to think that, but it kind of depends on who you're asking and how they look at the lagoon and where they see the value. So we wanted to test both approaches to make sure that we weren't missing an opportunity on the uh recreational side and the support it might have.
Okay, so so this is, here's my point. Yes, the uh, the, the lagoon and the stormwater collection system work together. It prevents flooding. Uh, historically, we had flooding before the lagoon was in place and working properly. Now we have largely solved that problem, but at the south end of the lagoon, where we're supposed to have six feet of water, we have about six inches now uh when there's water there. I saw a little creek kind of running through the south end, actually. Um, I'm concerned with the idea that I saw the word recreation repeated over and over again when talking about stormwater, because if we're talking about stormwater, then it's the storage basin, and it's a, it's the tank that stores what comes down, and its use for recreation is secondary. If I were thinking as a member of the public about paying dollars to support a recreation facility that the beach is closed at almost all year long because of high bacteria levels, and I don't want my kids in there, I think I might not really want to fund that as an amenity. But if I looked at it as a facility that's going to prevent flooding in our low-lying areas and keep people from paying uh uh flood insurance and keep our roadways and freeways open because they're not flooded being in the low-lying areas, then I think I might support that. So I just want to say right now, my feeling is, we're not really ready to go forward with anything because I I just don't believe that even the stormwater portion with its 51 and 54% projections there is necessarily going to pass. I think there's a big question mark there. I think it's very iffy. Um, and uh I think it would be better to withdraw for now, to go back to outreach and education to make it clear that the stormwater facility is not for water scares. It's actually for stormwater controls to prevent flooding. I mean, and and then after we complete that and we get some people realizing that there's some actual science here, water runs downhill, it has to go somewhere. Um, then I think we're ready then to go back out and ask a more informed voting public those questions. I just don't feel comfortable with this at all right now. And I see it looks like the Public Works Director and the City Manager have raised their hands. Which one of you would like to go first?
Uh, I'll go first. Thank you, uh, Mayor Benia. Um, I just wanted to to note, you know, as as it relates to this timeline, you know, the prior action that that council took to uh have staff pursue uh balloting on a, on a tax measure. Um, you know, we'll, we'll have results on that later this spring, and and we'll be asking council to make a decision uh with respect to tax measures, and we want to make sure that uh we position both for success uh if if we go the the route of the tax measure and if we proceed with uh continuing to pursue a stormwater fear. So my, my um, you know, we'll, what, we'll coordinate internally pending the direction tonight to make sure that um, we're not having too much overlap such that um we, we interfere with with the two
that we're not having too much overlap such that we interfere with the two different efforts, which means that this timeline may need to push out a little bit. We may be able to have some education and outreach that overlaps with the tax measure, but we're going to want to be careful that we don't have those two things stepping on one another's toes. So, I just wanted to make that point and see if there were any concerns or issues from council with that.
And Azelle, you have comments?
Sure, if I may add. So, we did not include the community outreach piece on this timeline because of the previous action. So, as our city manager noted, we would be working to make sure we're not confusing the city's efforts. And part of the educational piece, Mayor Bonilla, would really be focused on the stormwater element and the Marina Lagoon being our storage basin for that one-hundred-year storm. So, part of the strategy here would be to spend the next few months not only working on the fee study, but also on designing the outreach so that we can strategize better, not compete with other measures that the city is working on, but really develop a comprehensive outreach that would address the points that you just made. The storage component, the one-hundred-year storm, the safety issue associated with increased frequency of storms and climate change. So, we would spend this time strategizing on the outreach and then figuring out when it would be best to come back to council for then, you know, direction on the timing and also the results on that fee study.
Thank you. I've got a question for you, though. Regarding the hundred-year storm, is this still the hundred-year storm, given climate change, unpredictability? Can you respond to that?
Sure. As far as we know right now, it is, but indeed, the parameters do keep changing. The facility, the storage, the Marina Lagoon in terms of storage right now, combined with the pump station, allows us to handle the one-hundred-year storm. So, the Marina Lagoon is the basin, and then we have the time for the storage to then pump that out. So, as it stands right now, it is indeed rated for the one-hundred-year storm, but you're right, that is, could likely change in the future.
It's a moving target at this point.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, please.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I support staff's recommendation. I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think a lot of thought has gone into it. But I do, I do agree with Mayor Bonilla that in his feeling uneasy about this and about the communication, because I, in my gut, I have a feeling that this is going to be a hard sell as well. And so, I don't know, I have those two competing thoughts, so I don't really know where to go down on it. But I do think that the staff's recommendation might lead us to more information to figure out what we can do. So, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, do you have any comments?
I feel very comfortable with moving forward with staff's recommendation and the flexibility in consideration for some of the other initiatives that we're, we could be pursuing. And I think my, my one concern is, as we continue to do a more analysis of what the, what we can accomplish with a one-hundred-dollar fee and how that will, you know, how that will sufficiently find the needs of the Marina Lagoon. I think that that's a question for me that's top of mind, and I hear that there's a strong commitment from staff to solve for that and have a good answer. And so, I, I look forward to seeing the results of the fee study, and I feel really comfortable with the approach. And I, you know, while I appreciate the concerns raised, you know, I think that the best that we can ever do is just, you know, is make decisions with the information that we have. And I feel like we've taken great pains to be very methodical and as well-informed as possible, and the extra efforts of community education and how that could potentially move the needle for a more successful or a higher probability of success at the ballot. I think that, that's certainly effort worth taking. So, and I see that staff, you know, that staff is already, is already scoping that. So, I feel comfortable, and I look forward to seeing the fee study.
Okay, thank you. So, staff, I think you might have heard everything you need to hear at this point. Oh, Councilmember Rodriguez, you have something else?
I did not, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I knocked on my hand, thank you.
So, Sarah, are we okay now for information?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we move on to our final item on tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing. It's Agenda Item Number Twenty-Eight. It's a hearing on a, an appeal that was filed by the owner of a property at Three Thirty Villa Terrace, appealing in order to pay relocation benefits for a tenant who was displaced as a result of substandard conditions at the property. So, at this point, I would like to open it up to, I think we have a code enforcement officer who's going to present.
Yes, that's me.
Hello, Kristen.
Hi. Okay. All right. So, good evening, Mayor Bonilla and council members. My name is Kristen Ayew. I've been a code enforcement officer, working for the city of San Mateo for two years. Prior to this, I was a code enforcement officer in another jurisdiction for two years. I'm a certified code enforcement officer with the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, and also certified by the International Code Council as a property maintenance and housing inspector. This report before you, this evening, is an appeal from the property owner of Three Thirty Villa Terrace to pay relocation benefits to a tenant who is being vacated based on my findings and declaration of noncompliance substandard conditions. As noted in my report, I was summoned to this property due to active sewer leaking. During my inspection, I saw multiple noncompliant substandard conditions, therefore making this tenant eligible for permanent relocation payments. Staff agrees with the appellant that the fair HUD market rate listed in the notice is incorrect. We recommend correcting the relocation payment to the tenant to align with the 2022 HUD fair market rate for the one-bedroom unit in San Mateo County, which is $2,631 per month. Therefore, pursuant to the San Mateo Municipal Code, seven-point-five-zero-point-zero-nine-zero, the tenant is entitled to three times the HUD market rate, equaling to a total of $7,893. Missing a slide. One second. I have technical difficulties, sorry. Okay, that's fine. We'll just keep going. Okay. So, while the ordinance does allow for relocation into replacement dwelling or room in the same building or complex, there is no available replacement dwelling on this property. Therefore, the tenant should receive the full amount of the eligible relocation payment. The appellant has offered a replacement dwelling located in Redwood City, which is not within the same building or complex. Staff has consistently enforced this section of the code in the same manner as we believe that the tenant of council was provided an opinion, an option, sorry, to the property owners, but also to protect the tenant from additional inconvenience of relocating outside of city limits for conditions that have been determined, determined to be caused by the property owner's failure to provide safe housing. In this case, the tenant has lived in the community for approximately six years and has established connection within this area. Additionally, I asked the tenant if she had an interest in moving to Redwood City, and she advised me that she declined this offer.
I'm sorry. Kristen, could you hold on one second?
Sure.
Somebody's not muted there. Could we please go ahead and mute yourself? We can hear you talking. Thank you, Kristen. Go ahead.
Okay. So, let me repeat what I said. I spoke with the tenant and asked if she had an interest in moving to Redwood City, and she advised me that she declined this offer. So, that's it with my presentation. I'm happy to answer any of council's questions. And joining me tonight are Code Enforcement Manager Christine Civiletti and Assistant City Attorney Ling Nguyen, who have both worked with me in this case and are both available to answer questions as well. And sorry about the technical difficulties there.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Before we move on to other council members, I wanted to ask you, I thought I read in the report that there was also a thousand-dollar moving fee, because the tenant will have to move, not to Redwood City, but will have to move. I didn't hear you mention that. Is that part of the order?
Yes. The thousand dollars, it's up to a thousand dollars for moving expenses.
Yeah, with receipts, right. Yeah, the tenant needs to produce receipts, they'll reimburse up to one thousand dollars. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Councilmembers have any questions? Any councilmembers? Okay. Then I think, in that case, I'm going to, one second, I have some specific instructions here. Open the, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing right now, and then I'm going to call on certain parties in this order. Number one will be the appellant, who is the landlord. You have up to fifteen minutes to comment. Please go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we're having a problem because we cannot turn our video on.
One moment, please. Mr. Michaud, I will allow you to start your video, and I will only have, see if you can turn that on now.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Timothy O'Hara, attorney for Mr. Michaud, who is here with me.
Okay. One, if I could, I just want to state that we don't have a fifteen-minute timer, so I'm going to run three five-minute timers. I'm going to go ahead and start that now.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, go ahead, appellant.
Mr. Michaud is going to ask you this evening to be fair and to follow the municipal code. He's going to explain when he was first warned by the Community Development Department on February fourteenth that his unit was substandard because, in part, because of prohibited occupancy of an accessory structure on the property. He immediately took action to remedy the problem by offering, inviting to Ms. O'Brien a comparable unit, comparable size, comparable conditions, comparable amenities, for the same rent that she had been paying in the current unit. And the unit that Mr. Michaud offered was in compliance with the Redwood City zoning and building and housing codes. He's going to testify that, he's going to show you pictures of the Redwood City unit that he was offering, so that you can see for yourself that it was a comparable unit. Then he's going to ask you to apply the law, the municipal code, again, when it comes to, if you decide against his petition and require him to pay relocation fees to Ms. O'Brien, he's going to ask that you apply the code and apply the proper HUD relocation amounts, the HUD fair rental value figures. And Mr. Michaud will also testify that he has done extensive research on comparable rents in the San Mateo and Redwood City area, and believes that those comparable rents come to one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars a month instead of the proposed amount by the Community Development Department. So, I'd like to put Mr. Michaud on, to put on his evidence, to testify. Are you ready? Okay. Mr. Michaud, when did you first get warned of the substandard conditions on this property at Three Thirty Villa Terrace?
It was on February fourteenth.
And how did you react when you got that notice?
Well, I was quite surprised as far as they telling me that it was not, it was a storage unit, not a residential unit, because I've been paying taxes to the county for, since 2007, when I purchased the property. I've been paying license fees to the city of San Mateo since 2007, all on the fact that they, it is a residence. So, with that, I was quite surprised. Now, I know the property is not in an A-plus shape by any means. It's a cottage. It, we purchased it like that. It was noted as a three units when we purchased the property. And as far as the condition of the property, we've taken care of everything along the way, aside from additional wear and tear that we were not aware of. The tenant, for the council's information, the tenant has been there twelve years. I have a lease that states that she was there, that's signed by her and another gentleman. They've been there twelve years. In the write-up to the city, from the city, from the city manager, says the rent she's paying is sixteen ninety-five. Well, indeed, it's only sixteen forty-five. So, those corrections, I think, are very necessary for the record. And as far as substandard, before I go into what we did, once I got the notice from Kristen Al, is I just received a notice from the Fire Department. They do their annual inspections, Bureau of Fire Protection and Life Safety. Captain Gregory Campbell said, "Congratulations. The location meets California Fire Code. Excellent work. Thank you for helping us reduce fire risk." And it goes on from there. We take care of whatever property, problems there are with the property, and indeed, there was a sewer problem, I understand, but when we were told about it, we went over there and fixed it. And that happens throughout a lot of properties that we deal with, there's sewer blackouts all the time. Sometimes it's because of roots or pipes, or sometimes it's because of the tenant's usage of the plumbing system causes those kind of problems. But as my attorney, Tim O'Hara, just mentioned, when we were told of this by Kristen Al, we immediately sent out her a letter, excuse me, sent a letter to the tenant, giving her the option of taking one of our other units that we have available, and, which is a larger unit, better condition, actually, better location, and all aspects of the property better than what she is in right now. So, we offered that, and it was declined. So... So, uh, from that, we, uh, filed the appeal because, uh, we were given no other choice but to do so. In addition, uh, the, the properties that I had provided, uh, or the property that I provided to, or I have pictures of, uh, and the council will see that those pictures will depict a property far and away greater than what, uh, that, uh, Ms. O'Brien is, uh, living in. Uh, incidentally, when, uh, Ms. O'Brien moved into the property in ten, excuse me, in two thousand ten, uh, we have move-in pictures. The property was, uh, in, in very good condition. It's rustic, given, but it was in good condition and there was no health, safety matters. Uh, so whatever, uh, that has gone to that property since that time has been either not told to us or allowed or been, uh, uh, had happened to the property. And we just, uh, we took care of the property, uh, problems as they come about. And I have records to show any work orders that she has given to us during the period of time. And I have the expense reports that we have taken care of it. So if it's not to standard right now in terms of the residential living, which the county and the city have taxed me for and, and said that it's in, uh, residence, uh, then, uh, I'll let the council make that own judgment. Uh, but as far as the pictures, uh, I would like to show the pictures of the unit that we provided, uh, offered to her. And those pictures, uh,
Mr. Michaud, tell us more about the features of the unit that you offered to Ms. O'Brien.
Well, all right, so that property is approximately, uh, six hundred and fifty, uh, square feet, which is, uh, uh, about twice the square footage of, uh, of the one that she's, uh, living in right now on Villateras. Uh, we agreed to move her out immediately or, uh, and give her the option of, of taking this, uh, new unit. Uh, it's larger in size, the condition is, uh, new carpets, new vinyl. Uh, the bathroom has been, uh, remodeled, upgraded. And, uh, we, it complies with all the applicable zoning and building and housing codes. And, uh, the replacement rent that we are asking, and I've held it out for her, is nineteen hundred and fifty dollars. And that is a rent that is reflective of the marketplace. In, in the marketplace today, that's the real world. I have lots of apartments that I rent or I'm trying to rent, uh, at the eighteen fifty to nineteen fifty range. There is no way that this, uh, HUD rate, uh, that is being, uh, charged or twenty-six hundred and thirty-one dollars is accurate. That is only for top A-plus properties that they get that. The HUD housing, way they, they charge or, or rent properties, it's by, or, or allow us to rent to their, uh, housing applicants, it's by rent reasonableness. And what they do is they take comparables. And I would bet that, or guess that all of the people on the council would understand what a rent comparable is. And I've done that myself. There's about twenty rent comparables of properties that are at least, uh, oh, no, they're even better than, than what the Villateras property is. And the rent reasonableness or the rent average of those properties is nineteen hundred and thirty-two dollars. The property that we are renting, uh, and giving, allowing, uh, Ms. O'Brien to move to is nineteen hundred and fifty dollars.
And you're asking the council to accept in evidence your offer to move the tenant to a replacement dwelling dated February sixteenth, offering that in evidence?
Yes.
All right. A copy of that offer is in the packet that we provided to the council. Mr. Michaud, would you like to show the, the council photos, pictures of the replacement unit that you offered?
Yes, I'll, I'll get it on the screen.
These pictures are in your package. And we'd like to go through the pictures in the same order in which you have them there. And Mr. Michaud would explain what you are seeing in each of the photos? Please let us know when you're ready to, uh, take a look at those pictures. We're ready on this side.
Um, I think, I mean, we're ready unless there's something else holding up. You should go ahead and show them.
Okay. All right. Tell us about the first one.
Well, the first picture is, just says number fourteen. And that is a, just a number on the storage locker.
Yeah.
That's, uh,
Mr. Michaud, we're not seeing any photos, as far as I know.
Well, I don't know.
How have you loaded or prepared to transmit the photos?
We provided those photos to the city clerk. The city, city clerk, I see from your
Yeah.
agenda, agenda packet has the same pictures and in the same order with the
Right. So we, so we've all looked at the agenda packet and seen those photos of the property. Yeah, thank you.
All right, very good, okay. So the, uh, tell us about the second photo.
All right, well, it's, uh, it's, uh, walking in from a hallway, uh, there's a, a gas, uh, furnace, uh, wall furnace. There's, uh, entryway has laminate flooring, uh, brand-new carpeting in the living room.
Yeah, Miss Mr. Michaud and your attorney there, uh, respectfully, I, I don't think, I mean, you submitted the photos, they were in the packet, we looked at them. We're all familiar with normal living amenities and in apartments. I think we understand what we're looking at there. I think we'll stipulate to the fact your photos that they submitted, we've looked at them. Thank you.
Yes, we'd like to submit all those photos in evidence. I think there's about thirty photos.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Um, now, Mr. Michaud, you, you said, uh, you disagreed with the, uh, staff, uh, recommendation for the fair housing, uh, fair, fair rental value of the property. How did you make your survey and what did you discover?
Well, I'm in the business, have been in the business for fifty years. And I know what we do. We have a large property management concern, we have a general real estate company. I know what the market values of, of properties are. Uh, when I spoke with the Code Enforcement Officer, Kristin Al, uh, she told me those, uh, numbers, not that I, uh, uh, agreed with, you know, what her assertion or allegation was on her total complaint. But when I saw that she was asking for twenty-nine hundred dollars, now reduced to twenty-six hundred and thirty-one dollars, I tried to just explain to her that all day long, that is not accurate, that is wrong. And she just wouldn't have anything to do with it. She said, "Well, that's the record that we get off of HUD website." But that's not the information in the real world, in the marketplace. And if you call the, uh, Code Enforcement, not Code Enforcement, but the Housing Authority, uh, officials, uh, rent, that handle the rents in the San Mateo County, you'll find or you'll hear that they base it on rent reasonableness. So if they take, uh, a property, if I, if, say, for example, I, uh, had this property, uh, on Hemlock and I wanted, uh, twenty-nine hundred dollars, uh, for that, uh, unit, they'd tell me why, and then after I tried to, to fool them, they'd tell me to go fish. There's no way in this world that they're gonna pay that kind of money. It's nineteen fifty, eighteen fifty to nineteen fifty is the marketplace. So to put that in your, uh, brief, it's just totally wrong. And, and I don't understand, uh, why the, the city didn't allow more, uh, insight to really what the market is. And if they didn't want to believe me, there's a lot of realtors out there that are very, uh, attuned to the marketplace.
Thank you.
It's a time up.
Mr. Michaud, uh, Madam Clerk, are we out of time?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, we have done fifteen minutes.
Thank you very much. And then we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you for your statements there, Mr. Michaud and, and attorney. Um, we're now gonna go to the step two where the tenant has fifteen minutes to present. Do we have a tenant? A tenant present?
Christine or, um, Christina, do we have the tenant on the line?
I don't see her. I believe she said she was going to listen in, but I don't see her name list.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then I guess we will move to the next step, which is individual speakers with up to three minutes each to speak on this subject.
If you'd like to speak individually on this item, if you could, please raise your hand. Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Thank, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Then, uh,
Mr. Mayor, may I make a closing argument?
No.
Well, it looks like the next step here is landlord rebuttal, but I don't know what you're going to rebut. Certainly, it's on the list, so go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Very, very quickly here, I'd like to call your attention to the, the, uh, option that the, uh, Mr. Michaud exercised when he received the warning notice from the, uh, uh, the Community Development on, on February fourteenth. He complied with, uh, Section seven fifty point zero three zero. And I've attached a copy of the relevant portions of that in your packet. Subparagraph B six states that the property, property owner has the option to offer inviting to move the tenant household immediately to a replacement dwelling. And this is exactly what Mr. Michaud did. Alternatively, he could move her to a room in the same building, but as, as already noted, there is no other room in the same building. Now, if, if the council were to decide that, uh, relocation benefits are payable, then I'd like to call your attention to the, uh, code section seven point five zero point zero nine zero, which also is in your packet, and I've extracted the, the relevant portion of that. The relevant portion, relevant sentence in that says, "The property owner shall treat any noncompliant dwelling or room that does not have one or more separate built bedrooms as an efficiency unit for purposes of determining the applicable HUD fair market rent." That's right out of the, the, out of the, the code, out of the ordinance. Now, uh, Community Development is, uh, asking you to, uh, look at the HUD fair market rents for a one-bedroom unit. There is no evidence in the, in the packet or no testimony tonight that the unit now occupied on Villateras has a one-bedroom unit. It is an efficiency unit. And as an efficiency unit, the fair market rent would be two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, according to HUD. And that's, that's scheduled, HUD schedule is attached as, as the package that we presented for, for the agenda tonight. I have nothing further, and I should have questions for us.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we are now, um, we would have the time for a tenant rebuttal. Can we check again, see if the tenant is available to comment?
Uh, she doesn't appear to be, um, an attendee.
Okay, very good, then.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, one more, one more comment. Another couple of sentences, please.
Okay.
Just, we've, we've asked you a couple of times this evening to be fair and to apply the code. Just want to let you know that, Mr. Michaud, as soon as this unit is cleared, he's going to apply for permits to legalize that unit. So he, he's, he's, he's also trying to be fair and acting in good faith. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, and that's the end of your comments, so thank you very much. Um, at this point, I think I need to bring it, uh, back to the council. And for, uh, I think a decision. Who wants to go first? I have.
I will.
Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute, Kristin, do you have your hand up? Did you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to clarify, um, that the unit is a one-bedroom unit, not an efficiency unit. There is clearly a wall separating the bedroom from the living room, kitchen, and bathroom. Therefore, um, which is why we, uh, made it as a one-bedroom unit when looking up the fair HUD market rate.
Okay, thank you very much. And now I think I see Diane Papin with her hand up.
Did, persona, did you want to add something before I go?
No, persona.
Sure, I'll just briefly say that as you consider this appeal and, and whether or not the tenant is eligible for relocation benefits or whether it falls into the exception where the tenant is offered a comparable unit in the same building or complex. As you considered the evidence before you, I just wanted to point out the municipal code section that refers to the decision-making process. So specifically, uh, after you consider all the testimony and evidence, then the city council is to issue a written decision. And in past hearings, the council has, uh, made a motion one way or the other to either uphold the appeal or deny the appeal and then direct the city attorney to come back with a written decision, uh, to be prepared and presented on the consent calendar at the following hearing. So I just want to emphasize that there, this is a kind of a two-step procedure, that, uh, there would be a written decision that would come back, uh, for the council to formally adopt at the next meeting.
Thank you very much for letting us know that, uh, Mr. City Attorney will be sure to do that. Appreciate that. So I think basically the question is, uh, do we, uh, uphold the appeal or deny the appeal based on the evidence?
So I would suggest that we, uh, deny the appeal. The initial threshold question of whether or not there was an ability to provide alternate housing within the particular housing unit or, uh, housing setting, I think that threshold question hasn't been met, or the burden hasn't been met. There is not additional housing that has been provided. And then it looks like the calculations as, um, revised that were brought before us tonight are the correct calculations. Is that right, Ms. IU?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I would, uh, recommend that we have the city attorney deny the appeal with, uh, the assessment of the, uh, relocation costs as that, as were presented this evening.
If that's a motion, if that's a motion, I would second the motion to deny the appeal and impose the, the, uh, relocation assistance as calculated by Code Enforcement tonight. And I would direct staff through the, the city attorney to actually, uh, put our decision into writing for the next meeting.
And, and, uh, Councilmember Goldfoss, does that include the up to one thousand dollars in moving expenses for the tenant?
And the reimbursement for up to a thousand dollars in moving expenses, yes.
Thank you. Sounds like we have a motion and a second. Shall we have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, before the
Hold on. Oh.
I'm sorry, before, I'm sorry, uh, before the, the roll call vote, um, there's the relocation payment and then the actual moving costs and expenses. There is also the immediate vacation allowance of a thousand dollars, um, because of the timing of the notice. So, as, do I understand the motion to be those three components?
Yes, please, all three of those components.
If they were part of the appeal, then we're rejecting the appeal based on those three components.
Okay.
I think Councilmember Rodriguez had something.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Can I just, can I just ask, uh, our city attorney in the written, uh, recording of our, of our denial of the appeal to make all the same factual findings that were made, uh, before as well?
Understood.
Again, Councilmember Rodriguez, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to really quickly say I concur with, uh, with, with what were, the, the motion that was, um, that we're about to vote on. And I just wanted to say, you know, repeated over and over again was that a, a better location was offered. And location, well, first off, um, I think anybody in San Mateo could beg to differ that any place in Redwood City would be a better location. But that being aside, location is where your friends are, where your family is, where the, your neighbors are, where you can walk to the store that you, that you want to walk to. So it's very subjective. And if, um, if, if the person says that, that they want to stay in San Mateo, the, the place offered, no matter if it was even a mansion, the the place offered, no matter if it was even a mansion, might not be a better location. So I just wanted to give my two cents there, but I will be voting to deny the appeal.
I do appreciate the distinction, Councilmember Rodriguez, and thank you very much for making that comment. Uh, with that, I would like to say a whole lot more, but I think we're ready for a vote.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I also just, I support the the council in this decision, and and I think that it's worth stating on record that that we have had very um, zero tolerance for bad actors in and landlords that don't maintain their properties um, and uphold the safety of of our residents here. And and we are looking to strengthen our red tag ordinance. And and if there are repeat violations, then I I I am confident that this council will take further action to to penalize those those folks who who aren't taking care of their properties responsibly. The onus is not on the tenant to maintain their properties. It's not on the tenant to to communicate um, and any kind of routine maintenance. That is the responsibility of the landlord. I am a landlord, and and the the condition of this property um, is so far from, as you stated, A-plus. Uh, and and that is why you are in the situation right now. So please, consider yourself warned that um, this is not going to be tolerated in San Mateo.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I second that thought. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it is about habitability. And if you have the electrical issues that you've had and you have the sewage issues that you had, it is not habitability. So we have mechanisms in place. We're enforcing those mechanisms tonight. Let's go forward with the motion, shall we?
And so shall we have a vote, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Emphatic, yes.
Motion to deny the appeal carries five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we're at the end of our meeting tonight, and we're on to reports and announcements. Do anybody, does anybody have any reports and announcements? Yes, Councilwoman Lee.
Uh, I wanted to share that, that I was very fortunate to um, do a ride-along for Meals on Wheels morning and was um, was really overwhelmed to actually have a chance to sit with a lot of our seniors who are receiving subsidized meals in the city of San Mateo. And and it was quite surprising how how varied and and um, and diverse the population was and also geographically spread um, the folks who are receiving the service. And and many of our seniors, there are over one hundred seniors in the city of San Mateo, receive subsidized meals through Meals on Wheels every single week. Um, I was surprised to to know that it was that that many. And I would, you know, I would just encourage anyone who who is interested in in taking some time and meeting seniors and asking them, you know, what what issues are important to them and how they see their their future here in San Mateo um, to do a ride-along with Meals on Wheels. It's a great organization, and it was a really fantastic learning experience.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Lee. Thank you.
Um, okay.
Others? Okay, seeing that, how about the city manager?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Nothing. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, anything?
Uh, nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing that, then, and seeing we don't have any moment of silence for tonight, then I would actually seek adjournment right at this moment. Thank you all very much for participating in tonight's meeting. Have a good night.